Welcome to the Tuesday, June tenth, regular Timneth Town Council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Peters Garcia to take the role.
Yes, Mayor Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
All right, everybody is present and accounted for. If you haven't noticed, we're under a bit of construction here. This is the installation of the upgrades to our technology to ensure that we have better accessibility and transparency in our meetings. And so we are experiencing some challenges with our streaming reliability. And so there are upgrades going on there. And then also some visual upgrades in here to make the presentations in the council more accessible to everyone. So please bear with us tonight, apologize for the mess. Counselor, are there any requests to amend the agenda this evening?
No.
All righty, then we will move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunities for members to address, members of the public to address council on items related to town business. We do not have any items scheduled for public hearing this evening. So if you're signed up, we would ask you to speak during normal public comment, even if it is on an item later in the agenda. It looks like we have three people signed up this evening. So I will first invite Raymond Wright to the podium. Strike, good evening, welcome back. And I think we don't have the microphone on for you there, but it's the little guy looks like a speaker.
Yeah. There we go.
Welcome, sir, if you'll.
Yeah, my name is.
Address and.
My name is Raymond Wright, five two five oh, Fourth Avenue in Old Town Timneth. There's several, a couple, three different things I want to bring up tonight. But the first of all is how many people were living here in nineteen ninety nine, two thousand, two thousand one? Nobody that I know. That was the first time we started about talking about development in Timneth. Community meetings getting together, didn't have a mayor, didn't have a planning and zoning. We had a dream. The first thing out of the chute was Timneth Parkway. And it was adamant from since the day one that Timneth Parkway would be here. So thankfully, twenty five years later, it opened and here it is, folks. Great work, good job. We needed that in big time, excellent. The second thing, I guess I want to have two things to talk about is the new community center proposed for across on Fourth Avenue, or however you want to say that. It's nice that it's happening, could happen. I'm glad that the town is putting it forward to a vote. There's things that I am upset about prior to this is that we have funding for the town center with Topgolf. Topgolf would have paid for that maintenance of the new town center. Now the town's coming to us with hand, hat in hand, asking for a one point two five percent tax to maintain and fund that town center when we had it already in our hand. All we had to do is say yes, but it got, got kicked around and beat down the bush. So my feeling is that the people that pushed that agenda should help pay for that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, appreciate your comments this evening. Next, Sandy Alberico.
Hi there, my name's Sandy Alberico and we live at forty fourteen Kern Street in Timneth. The back of our property is about straight up to Timneth Parkway, which is beautifully new and beautifully landscaped. And all the homes and all the new divisions have beautiful five or six foot fences to kind of ward off some of the sound. However, the three houses that up at that Parkway that are original in Old Town, none of us have any sort of a sound barrier, privacy. And it's really ugly weeds. So I'm just wondering who I can talk to to see if the town is going to do something. Because I asked this a couple of years ago. If we were going to have a beautiful landscape back there like the mile that they just put in. And they told me no, because the builders for those, you know, lots are in charge of that. And they're building that so we're just S O L. And so I'm just wondering, now that it's there and the weeds are getting tall and ugly. You know, between our fence, which is just barbed wire and the actual road, is that going to be maintained by anybody? None of us have access to that from our back fences, so. To mow weed or whatever. So. Who would I contact?
Yeah.
To find that out.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for sharing that concern. I'll tell you, Scott Robinson, our Director of Community Development, if he's not the right person, I'm sure he can get you connected with someone. These are obviously answers that, that, you know, council wasn't prepared to answer tonight. But.
Right.
But I would ask you to connect with Scott here and we'll see what, what staff can do.
I know in the past, we weren't incorporated into the city yet. But now we have building, I'm going to actually get sewer soon. Knock on wood.
That's on the agenda tonight, yeah.
Finally. And not have septic and we're the last three houses that have been held out. So. I'll get in touch with him, thank you.
Great, no, thank you. And then I have Chris Alberico signed up. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, this, my name is Chris Alberico and I live with my wife Sandy at four zero one four Kern Street. Basically, I just wanted to say a couple of complimentary things. First of all, for my, our specific topic pertains to, I think, sixty on the agenda. And, and I'm glad that the, the town has organized through Earl and others, I'm sure, to, to do that grading and excavating on the Fourth Avenue. That's going to pertain to our property. I also want to thank the rights because we're sort of landlocked where we are. So the line has to go through their property. So I'm glad that the rights cooperated with that. So we can get the sewer line hooked up on, on the Fourth Avenue. So, yeah, with that, I mean, I am interested in seeing what Earl has to say tonight. I'm not sure exactly how that's all going to go, but I know we have trees along the back edge. Oops, sorry about that. We have trees along the back edge of our garage. That goes down the side of our house. So I'm, I'm interested in, in how they might do the boring or the excavating back there. But overall, I just wanted to thank the team for, for getting that done, or almost getting that done. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir, thank you for being here. All right, those are all the folks who have signed up. Before we move on, I'd ask if there's anyone present that did not sign up but would like to address council this evening? All right, I see no one, so we will continue with our agenda, moving on now to the consent agenda, which tonight has three items. First approval of the May twenty seventh Town Council meeting minutes. Second, Resolution forty two, series twenty twenty five, a resolution approving the Timneth Finance Committee bylaws. And third, Resolution forty three, series twenty twenty five, a resolution approving Fifth Amendment to independent contractor agreement between the town of Timneth, Colorado and H S Incorporated, doing business as Service Master Janitorial Solutions. Counsel, is there any requests to pull an item from the agenda this evening? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose nay? Consent agenda passes five zero. We'll now move on to council reports, start down here this evening. Mr. Jenkins?
Sure. Our recent North Front Range Metropolitan Organization meeting was held last week. And we had a briefing from Region Four C dot Director on the status of funding for various transportation projects in Region Four that includes our area. And the good news is there are some projects that will receive funding. The bad news is there were huge budget shortfalls this year and a number, number of projects that were on the list to be, to be started this year are not going to happen this year as a result of these significant cutbacks. The list is not finalized yet. But the state is coming up with their strategic tenure plan and it's, it's pared back significantly and stuff has moved into out years. So, however, I will say that I twenty five is fully funded and will be, will be completed. So that's good news for us up here in the North Front Range. And that's it from me.
Thank you, sir, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I just want to thank town staff for the awesome ice cream social. Had a blast. Weather held out for most of the night. So up until the last minute, when I think there were some bounce castles and almost took, took off. But, you know, I, I think everybody really came out and enjoyed themselves. I enjoyed the new event, which was kid jousting. And I think that was the first time we had the jousting event. So, or the, I don't know, maybe back in the day, I don't know if anybody remembers, but on TV, growing up, I watched American Gladiators. So, yeah, it was amazing to watch all the kids do that, so.
We gotta get those tennis ball cannons.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So I just want to thank town staff, it was, it was a great event and a lot of people showed up. And, you know, we have, takes a lot to put those events on, so thank you.
I'll, I'll echo that quickly too, only because it took four days to convince my son to take off his Spiderman face painting. So you know, it's a good time when, when he eats three ice cream, somehow he got his three ice cream and got his face painted. So, yeah, great event. Somehow this town has a curse when it comes to weather in our events. But we're getting through them this year so far. So hopefully, Fourth of July goes off without a hitch. Right, yes, I, I agree, another successful event. Thank you for everyone that was part of that. I just want to toss a couple of things out there at the rec center, proposed rec center. First of all, wanted to thank Tom and his team for putting on the three public information sessions. I know that those are all well attended and we got a lot of good, good questions out of that. Wanted to remind folks that if they want more information about the rec center, proposed rec center, timneth.org/reccenter has a lot of great information there, including some frequently asked questions. And then everyone in town should have received in the mail, the questionnaire that we're asking folks to provide feedback with that. So, yeah, registered voters, thanks. So asking folks to keep an eye out for that and to please participate in that. We, of course, appreciate all the feedback and information as we continue to look at what next steps might be and whether or not there's support to put something on the ballot measure for November to, to make this a reality. Counsel, anything else before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to our regular business items, beginning with item six A, the twenty twenty five Community Survey Findings Report. Town Manager Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, we're here to talk about the community survey. We actually have with us Derek Harvey, who is the project manager from E T C. And he has a brief presentation he'll work through and then we'll open it for any questions you might have.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight to go over the results of your twenty twenty five Town of Timneth Community Survey findings. Assist control slides, should work. Okay, there we go. I'm Derek Harvey, I'm a project manager from E T C. Me and Ryan Murray were the project managers for this project. He's our Assistant Director of Community Research. Unfortunately, he had a conflict tonight, so he could not make it. But we will move on without him and I think we'll be just okay. A little bit about E T C, we're one of the nation's leader provider of market research for local governments. Since twenty twelve, we've surveyed about twelve hundred communities and we've done surveys in all fifty states. We've been around since nineteen eighty three and really for the last fifty years, we've focused on these community surveys for local governments. For the agenda tonight, we're going to cover the perceptions and ratings from Timneth, the major town services and the ratings they got, public safety, and then downtown Timneth and some of the questions we put on the survey for that. At the end, there will be time for questions. The purpose was to objectively assess town programs and services. We wanted to gather resident feedback to help town leaders set priorities. And then we wanted to identify areas for improvement for the community as well. To do this, we created a survey that was administered by mail, a phone and online with follow ups through text, email and social media. The way we did this is we mailed out a survey to everybody that was selected. And in the survey, they had a cover letter explaining the purpose, told them they could go online, take it. They could call us, take it over the phone, or they could fill out that paper survey and send it back to us so we could get it all in there. The sample is designed to ensure the results are statistically valid and representative of the community. The way we did that, we took your town boundaries, put them on a G I S map, purchased all the residential addresses in there, and that's what we selected the random sample from. So everybody in the town had the same percent chance of being selected for the survey. Our goal was six hundred surveys, we got six hundred and twenty two. So we exceeded our goal and our margin of error was three point four percent at the ninety five percent level of confidence. Kind of an overview slide, I just put these numbers on the left because I think are they are some of the numbers you should remember when you look at the results. Ninety five percent of the respondents rated Timneth as an excellent or good place to live. Ninety three percent said Timneth was an excellent or good place to raise children. And then plus forty six points was the difference between your ratings and E T C's national average. So you guys are leading the way in that area as a place to live. Perceptions of the city are high, we'll cover that in the ratings perception. But when we look at our national and mountain averages, you'll see that Timneth is leading the way in most categories, on par with just a few and even lower, I think only like two or three throughout the whole report. Overs, overall satisfaction of major services is strong. Timneth performed well in key areas such as streets and sidewalks, communication and parks and recreation. And then opportunities for improvement, we designed the survey so that E T C could make priorities for improvement. I'll get into how we designed that a little later. But planning and development services and flow of traffic were the highlighted areas that were for improvement on the survey. When we looked at perceptions and ratings, the perceptions of Timneth are extremely high. You received ratings above fifty percent in all the areas here. The big ones I like to pull out are the overall feeling of safety at ninety five percent and the overall quality life at eighty three percent. As you can see, even the lowest one, overall value that you receive for your town tax dollars and fees, still got fifty one percent of your residents saying they're very satisfied or satisfied with that. And even though that's the lowest one, when we look at benchmarking, you can still see that you're above the mountain and national average in that area. In fact, that fifty one percent is one of the highest I've seen for that overall value question on any of the surveys I've seen. As you can see, in the other areas, you're leading the way. I like to include that when we do benchmarking, it allows us to put your ratings in context to make sure, so you can see how you're doing with those national averages and your regional averages. When we looked at the ratings, Timneth received ratings above fifty percent in three out of the five areas. As a place to live and as a place to raise children are the big ones I always look at when I look at a survey. You got ninety five percent and ninety three percent on those extremely high ratings. When I see that, I usually can tell that the rest of the survey is going to have high ratings. But we know there's going to be areas for improvement in there, but people generally like to live in your community. The lowest rated ones are as a place to visit and as a place to work. The lowest one, as a place to work, didn't surprise me. You guys are in an area where there's other larger communities where people probably go to work and there's probably a lot of commuters that live here. When we looked at benchmarking, those top two jump off the page, you're leading the way. And those areas as a place to retire is on par with the mountain or region, or the region average. And then as a place to visit, as a place to work are the two that were behind. But I think there's some things as a place to visit, you guys have a lot of beautiful places around here that people tend to visit more, I assume. And then as a place to work, there's a lot larger communities around you where jobs are. When we looked at major town services, more than half of your respondents were satisfied in eight out of the eleven cert areas we assessed. Your top areas are town streets and sidewalks, police services, town communication, town customer service and park and rec facilities. The three that were the lowest was overall flow of traffic on streets. That was one area is highlighted for improvement. Efforts to ensure your community is prepared for emergencies and disasters. And then that overall quality of town's planning, building and development review process. I do want to point out that the efforts to ensure community is prepared for emergencies and the town's planning and building did receive pretty high neutral ratings of almost thirty five percent and fifty percent. When I see that, that tells me respondents just haven't encountered or unsure what the town is doing with that and didn't know how to give the rating there. When we looked at importance, we asked which of those services are the most important for the town to provide? You had a clear top winner at fifty four percent and that was your overall quality of parks and recreation programs and facilities, followed by the overall quality of the town's planning and building. And then overall quality of police services and traffic on town streets, followed those up. When we looked at benchmarking, as you can see, the top half of that table, you guys are leading the way against the regional and national averages. And then at the bottom, you're on par with flow of traffic and then on par with the efforts to ensure your community is prepared for disasters. And then, like I said, we designed the survey to create these priorities. The way we did this is we asked overall satisfaction of all eleven of those areas, how satisfied are you? The next question was, okay, which one of these are the most important for the town to provide? Using this, we ran it through E T C's important satisfaction rating. It gave us three areas that were high priority for the town. That was the overall quality of the town's planning, building and development review processes, the overall flow of traffic on town streets and the overall quality of your park recreation programs and facilities. And what we see here is items that are higher in importance, lower in satisfaction will come up and then vice versa, lower importance, high satisfaction, they'll be at the bottom. And overall quality of parks, it was the most important and it also had high satisfaction, but because it was clearly. But because it was clearly so important, that's why it got brought up and it's a high priority area. When looking at public safety, we asked people how safe they feel in different areas of the town. You received extremely high ratings in all the areas assessed above 50%. And the top one, overall feeling of safety in the community, 97% of people said they feel very safe or safe. In this section, benchmarking, once again, you guys are clearly ahead on this. This whole section, you guys have extremely high ratings. I wanted to put this in here because I feel like it's probably an area and a reason for people to live in the town. So as you can see on here, more than half the respondents were satisfied in all the areas assessed. Efforts to prevent crime was the top item, followed by fire services, how quickly they respond, the overall service, ambulance and emergency medical services, and then police services. Your lowest areas for visibility of police and retail and commercial areas and neighborhoods, and then the enforcement of local traffic laws. When we looked at benchmarking, once again, you guys are clearly ahead. Of everybody, I think there's only one on there where the mountain region gets within a couple percentage points of you. But once again, these are impressive results. And then when we looked at the priorities for investment for public safety, giving the high overall satisfaction scores, it was no surprise that none of the items got to the level of a high priority when we looked through it. This reflects the town's strong performance in these areas. They're delivering the services and meeting resident expectations right now. However, this means the town should continue to emphasize this and maintain excellence in these areas. And then finally, we, I think we had three or four questions on downtown Timnith or Old Town. The first question we asked residents was how would you rate the overall quality of downtown Timnith? 28% rated it as very good or good, 25% were neutral, but 45% rated it as very poor or poor. When we looked at, we asked them how many times they've visited in the last 12 months. 39% only visit a few times a year, 21% visit on a weekly basis, but only 8% never visit. And then finally, we asked them to rate their level agreement with the following statement, which is I would support the town of Timnith allocating funds and staff time to revitalize Old Town, downtown Timnith, including attracting more businesses and services. 81% of your residents said they would agree with that statement. And only 10% of residents said they would disagree with that. And then 10% were neutral. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Questions? All right, I have some comments. I don't know if others do, but before I jump in, I don't know if Aaron, you have anything to add?
Well, I'll keep it brief, but I would just say these community surveys are really important for us as a staff and I think for you folks as elected. You know, I appreciate ETC being able to help us benchmark. That's something we haven't seen historically, so I appreciate that perspective. I think it's good to help us to see ourselves both in our region and across national averages. I think I would just want the public to know as a staff, we take the results very seriously, that we want to respond as, as we have areas to improve, but also to help celebrate some of those things that we're doing so well in. It's always encouraging to see against those benchmarking and maybe that's why I like them because it stacks pretty favorably for us generally. So yeah, I think that's just my general comments.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
Yeah, I agree with you, Aaron. I appreciated the benchmarking on this. And I hope we're going to post this on our website, I presume. So yeah. Lot of good information in there. And in particular, since the next item on the agenda relates to one of the, one of the questions there. Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, I think twice I looked at Lisa and just said, wow, which is, I mean, the results are awesome, right? I loved watching the smile on Aaron's face during, during the results of that too, which I smile as well because the work that went in before this, right? The results, the surveys before this that got us to these results. And then the result, the work from here, that's going to get us even better. And we're already way ahead of the curve is huge. The one that stood out for me, and maybe because I want us to be awesome and everything, is places to visit. I think, you know, maybe, maybe a question for you is what areas do you, do you see in your, in your experience as ways to improve that? But at the same token, isn't that maybe a question we should ask out of towners as opposed to people that live here? As to do you want to go visit Timnith, the people that live here? And again, with a new rec center, things like that, I mean, shopping, more shopping coming. I think you would probably get even a better answer to from out of towners too. So those are, those are the things that kind of stuck out to me, but I mean, awesome results and very detailed. So we appreciate it.
I also want to thank the community members who took the survey. I know sometimes if you get those in the mail, you don't always look at them or always want to complete them. So having over 600 people in the community fill that out, I think also speaks to the community interest in, in our community. And so Aaron made a good point of, we definitely take these results seriously. It's definitely directed a lot of the work that the council has taken on over the course of the last 10 plus years at least, and hopefully will continue to do that.
May I put it now?
Yeah, I'm like Councilman Holt. You know, I think a place to retire as we move forward will be important. And looking at this survey, I think that's important as well. You know, I look at this results and I, I definitely want to thank the leadership team that's here and the good work that you guys are doing. And I want to thank all Timnith staff tonight because results like this, you know, they, it helps to have a great leadership team, but there's, everybody's involved in this process. Every single staff member contributes to this. It's a culture. It's people showing up to work every day. And so I think this should be celebrated as Timnith and every staff member. Thank you to, you know, the police services because that's rated really high. And I know just being at the ice cream social, seeing how our, our police force interacts with our community. It's different. It's different than any other community and you see it in these results. So I think it really should be celebrated and I, I agree with Bill. I think this should go on our website and we should be really happy with the results. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Harvey, thank you and your team for doing this. This information really is helpful for us to understand where we're at, but also where we need to continue to go. And it really does help us inform decisions. I, when I first saw this, was thrilled to see how Timnith compares in the region and nationally. And I echo what Mayor Protem had to say. Our, our staff at every level really should be congratulated to have these sorts of numbers while we're in the midst of, of growing as a town and as an organization really is impressive. Because in some ways, we, we are often building the, the plane as we're trying to fly it. And the, the numbers really just, just stood out to me. Of course, we all see the couple of things that are not perfect and we go, how, how do we fix it? Is, is this something that, that needs to be fixed? Is this a perception issue? Is this an education issue? One that jumped out at me was the overall value for taxes being a low number. And, you know, for example, our property taxes are something like $276 per $500,000 of house. It, I mean, it's, it's not, not a lot of money. So in terms of what the town's getting from property taxes, it's very little. But people see their property tax bill every year and they don't realize how much of that is going to things that aren't the town, whether it's their metro district, whether it's the school district or, or everything else. And then I look at our sales tax, which at 3% or two and a quarter for food items is the lowest in the region. And so I wonder, are people generally just frustrated with paying taxes? Do people not understand which tax is going to the town? Or are we not giving good value? But, but I look at the, the results and everything else and I have to think that there may be an opportunity to continue to, to increase understanding there. I also made note of, note of the lower scores on place to visit and place to work. You know, we're undergoing our comprehensive plan update. And I think part of that process will be defining whether or not, you know, those are priorities. But we see a low score and we go, how, how do we improve that? Traffic is always a frustration. I did want to compliment the staff. We have a lot of traffic projects going on right now. We just heard about the, the Parkway. We just completed our traffic master plan. And we're working on traffic calming, pedestrian safety. So, so there's a lot of efforts going on there, but, but understanding that we need to keep on that is, is important. To see the frustration with town planning, I thought, that was interesting. You know, we have certainly been in the process of transitioning from a contract planning staff to in-house staff. And I will tell you that as I go out into the community, the, the feedback in terms of our staff, both planning, engineering, you know, has, has been extremely positive. I hear a lot of working with so-and-so is, is absolutely fabulous. And so I, I, I think we're doing a lot of good things there. We are in the middle of a code review process. I think we all recognize that, that our code, you know, can be more forward link looking. I know a lot of people are working hard on that. So I appreciate that, that effort. But you know, that, that is one, I guess we'll, we'll continue to ask, how can, how can we continue to exceed expectations there? That is one that I go, are people, why are people frustrated? And I'd like to drill down more on that. I know a lot of the frustrations we hear are metro district frustrations and there's confusion between what is a metro district? What's the town's role in that? And so I, I think we should look at that. And then finally, the 81% supported spending more money in Old Town, I, I think is an important metric for us to consider. So, though I have, again, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any last thoughts before we move on?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. One, with regard to the taxes and some of the other issues, I think part of that is, is an educational process and, and we could perhaps do a better job. And I know in terms of the development process, we've got some pretty good communication going on to educate the public about, about that. But I, I don't think we do as good of a job on the tax issue as we could in terms of education. And I'm with you on drilling down to see in the areas where we're a little bit lower, but still actually pretty good compared to our region, even on the lower items, finding out what those issues are. Because this just tells you, you know, a satisfaction rating, it doesn't tell you what they're not happy about or what we could do. So I think we need to dig a little bit deeper. And the last thing, as a former scientist, researcher, I really appreciate the fact that we're taking a statistically valid approach in asking these kinds of questions. It's no small feat to come up with a 0.05 P level and plus or minus three or 4%. That really tells me that we're doing a very professional job in getting at these issues. And so I really trust the numbers that were presented tonight. So thanks for, thanks for doing that the right way.
All right. Good. Then we will move on. Thank you, sir. To item six B, resolution number 44, series 2025. Resolution approving the organization and funding of the Timnith Main Street Program. Ms. Graves and team.
We have the Old Town Steering Committee here to present to you guys about the Main Street Program. And so I'll hand it off to Allison.
Turn on, hold on one sec, Allison. Turn on the microphone. There you go.
Okay. Yeah, I was like, it feels like it's not on. So if we have questions at the end, we can talk through the numbers. But so what I want to do tonight is talk to you all about the official proposal that the Old Town Steering Committee would like to make regarding the Main Street Program for Timnith. As you guys know, I was here back in March on behalf of the committee where we talked about the proposed structure for the program. So tonight we'll be talking a bit more about what the actual request is and what we're actually proposing and looking for from the council and the town. So I did, I knew that we were covering the survey at this presentation. I didn't know that I would literally have this exact same slide. But you guys have already heard, 81% of people in, you know, who completed this survey agree that we should be investing in downtown Timnith. This was no surprise to me as a member of the Old Town Steering Committee who's very, you know, supportive of developing downtown, but I did want to share this. So we can move right along since we already covered that. So before I jump into the funding sources, I do want to just kind of quickly recap to you all what we had discussed last time, which is how we want to structure the program. So our proposed structure for a Main Street Program for the town is a hybrid structure. And what we're envisioning is receiving both fiscal and personnel support from the town and then also establishing an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which would be the Timnith Main Street Organization. And that organization would have a board of directors made up of community members. We're actually in the process of selecting those now, but would also include at least one town council member as well as one town staff member. And then of course, like I said, we're looking for some fiscal support as well from the town. And so in order to make that happen, there are some resources that we'll need in addition to needing, you know, that staff support that we mentioned and having that board of directors. We also do plan to hire a contracted initially, maybe eventually more of a true full-time salaried employee who would be a Main Street Program Manager and they would be working for the 501(c)(3). And so all of that, of course, costs money. And so in order to make that happen, we are proposing this particular model in terms of where we want to gather our funding from. And once I talk through these numbers, I will go back and talk a little bit about how we got there. But I figure you guys probably just want to know the numbers. But so what we are proposing for our funding sources is that at least in the initial onset of this program, we would want 50% of the funding to come from the town. We're anticipating obtaining 20% of our funding from grants, 10% from corporate sponsorships, and then 20% from fundraising done via events and then other contributions. And so this is how we're ultimately wanting to structure the funding of the program. And if you want to go to the next slide. And here is what our actual request is. So we know that establishing a 501(c)(3) is not something that happens overnight. So we don't anticipate that we're going to be hosting events in the fall. So we know that for the initial ask, we're really just looking for funds to help us establish the program and really establish that 501(c)(3). So our initial request for FY 2025 is just $11,300. And those expenses are going towards primarily the startup costs for the 501(c)(3). So the legal expenses, the financial expenses in terms of, you know, consulting with financial advisors. We are planning to apply for a DOLA grant with a match. And then we are anticipating a small level of marketing expenses to help create awareness for the program and the town. Our hope would be that, you know, by the end of FY 25, we'll be ready to really kick things off. And so in FY 26 is when we would be looking to request a higher amount, which would be $50,000. And that $50,000 will contribute to the overall $100,000 budget that we anticipate needing for this program. And the other funding sources, I realized after the fact there was a typo, but we're anticipating $20,000 coming from grants, $10,000 from corporate sponsorships, and then $20,000 from fundraising. And so these are of course, high numbers, even the 11,000, that's, you know, no small amount of money. So I do want to talk a little bit about some of the of the research that we did in order to get there. I do want to note, I know, as council members, you were all sent some additional documents. You were sent, I think, the written proposal, as well as the written out budget. And so we can, of course, answer more specific questions. But as far as that first $50,000 for that FY 26, where that's going, it's, part of it is going to help contribute to the salary or the payment for our contract Main Street program manager. You know, we'll continue to have legal expenses and financial advisor expenses every year, and then additional expenses for things such as events, as well as marketing. And again, we can kind of talk through some of those line items if you have questions. But the way that we arrived at these numbers was really by working with the Main Street Organization nationally, and then looking at some of the data that they have. So the National Main Street Organization did a survey of all of the Main Street programs in 2024. And we looked at that survey data, and we really tried to look at the towns that were most similar to ours. And so for us, that was towns of 15,000 people or less. We also kind of narrowed that down really to towns in Colorado, excluding excluding any towns that have more of a high tourism draw. So like Steamboat Springs, Granby, those types of places. Obviously, you know, we want Timneth to be a town to visit, but it's not those places. And so what we found was the median budget for these programs in towns that were most similar to ours was around $100,000 to $125,000. And this is overall, so not just from the town. And then we tried to structure our funding model based off of what we saw as the average. So you can see here, on the first column is what other towns are doing. And then that middle column is what we're recommending. So we're pretty much in line with what the other towns similar to us are doing. You know, their average was 46% from the town, we're recommending 50. The biggest difference really is with the grants. The average amount was around 10%, and we're anticipating 20% of our budget will come from grants. But there are some things that we don't necessarily have. So a lot of these towns have business improvement districts. Some of them are getting as much as 5% from those. Others are getting certain types of federal funding, or they're doing membership dues. And at this time, we're not anticipating having any funding from those other categories. So we know we'll have to work a little bit harder to get some of those grants. So this is how we ultimately arrived at those numbers. We reviewed the research of other towns. And I know my colleague Debbie here has a bunch of those numbers as well. But we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Again, like I said earlier, we know this is a lot of money. And so we want to ensure that we have thought through what are the success measures here. And so for us, that's really going to come down to a couple of things. One, how many grants we're submitting each year, and how many grants were being awarded. Obviously, we're in a bit of a tougher climate for that right now, as there are some federal grants that have been taken away. But, you know, we're still going to do our best to get some of those. Creation of new events, right now, we don't have any events that are specifically in downtown that would be related to this program. And so ideally, creating some events, the number of new businesses we're able to help attract within downtown, or that, you know, come about organically as a result of these efforts. Also, the support from existing downtown businesses for the Main Street program. The Old Town Steering Committee does have two members who are a part of, you know, the Main Street businesses, you know, and we know we have some business owners who expressed interest in the board. So we do know there's support, but we want to continue to grow that. And then just the creation of more fundraising mechanisms to help support us. Like I said, we don't have anything from that other category yet. So hopefully, over time, we'd be able to develop that. We'll go to one more slide. And then, you know, to really help us, what we have created are some things to help keep us on track, right? And to make sure that we're following through on what we're, what we say we're going to do, and really meeting those expectations. And so we have a couple of different ways we're planning to do that. The first is through the Timneth Town Council. The Board of Directors will be creating quarterly reports on earnings and events and what's being done, and then presenting to the council at least once a year, ideally during the time that we're looking to make our funding request for the next year. And during that time, we would be giving a more detailed report on what we've accomplished. We also plan to work with the Timneth Planning Commission, the program manager for the Main Street program, you know, will regularly go to those meetings and provide updates as needed. As I mentioned earlier, as a part of the board of directors, we do plan to have a Timneth staff member who's on that board. But between that, and then regular interactions with town staff, we do plan to regularly stay in contact with town staff, letting them know what we're doing, connecting with them as needed for events. And then, lastly, working with other Timneth nonprofits. Obviously, we've established this great Main Street Committee, but we do have Together for Timneth Guide Our Growth, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. And it would be our hope that we could collaborate with them where needed, since a lot of those organizations have very similar, you know, missions to what the Main Street program would be looking to do. So lastly, I'll just kind of walk through what our timeline plan is. So it's already June 2025. But our goal would be to hopefully get this approved. And then shortly after doing that, working with the town to identify who the initial Main Street staff member from the town would be, because we don't anticipate having that program manager until next year. So we would ideally have a town liaison initially. In July, we're hoping to officially have selected the board of directors. And then also, like I said, having that town staff member this fall, between September and October, we want to make sure we're establishing that 501(c)(3). We plan to work with the Timneth Finance Team to make sure that we're on track with the funding processes, and then also really, in a more detailed way, outlining those success metrics for the program. And then, our hope would be that by November 2025, we have a full job description written for the program manager, and that we're posting and hiring, even though it's kind of near the busyness of the holidays, so that that role can be filled by January. And so that we'll be ready to really kick off with that 501(c)(3) established, that board, and that staff member. So that is kind of what we're looking at after tonight. So that is all I had to say. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Debbie and I can answer really anything.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Keithley. And thank you, everyone who's present, who worked on this, and everyone who's not present that worked on this. I know there's been many, many meetings. And Mayor Protem Wagner, Councilmember Holt, thank you both as well for your work. I guess before we do questions, I'm curious, for the two council members that are a part of this, do you have anything to add to the presentation or thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'll add that I haven't seen this presentation. We've been, Luke and I have been part of it, and you guys crushed it. So I mean, the presentation, I think, is great. I think the concept is great. From where it started to where it is, if the town only knew the amount of work and effort that most of this board and group put together for it, and the research that was done, is awesome. I think it's a great program. I think, you know, initially, you always want to shoot for the moon and ask for all the money in the world. And, you know, the, this presentation, to me, shows that they're wanting, the town is willing to put in the work, meaning the residents of the town are willing to put in the work, and realize that money just doesn't flow out of town hall, is what it seems to me, and that, you know, they're going to back that with actual measured measurements. So that's my two cents from it. I'd actually, I'll let Luke talk a little bit through, but I'd love to hear what the three of you, other council members that weren't part of it, think of it, and questions from there.
Yeah. Gosh, we have come a long way. And I want to thank, again, everybody that's on the Steering Committee. We've not only done this Main Street program, but we've dug into several other things, properties. We've, we've looked at, you know, the codes, we've looked at everything. And but this has definitely been the highlight. And where we've gone back three or four times, we've done the research. And, you know, we actually even had the Town of Wellington come in on this one. So this one was a big lift, and it was a big lift for everybody involved. So I want the other council members here to know that it wasn't taken lightly by any means. I can't tell you the number of meetings where we sat there and debated this, hours upon hours. So I just want to put that forward, that everybody that was involved in the committee did their, did their part and did the work to come to this point. So I want to thank everybody involved in the process.
And I'll echo that, too. And I know we, it sometimes sounds like a staff commercial when we're up here, but you guys are awesome. And Scott and Logan, specifically in this project, the amount of work that Logan, just the expertise that Logan has in this was huge. And the support that she gave to the group that was doing the research is, was a tremendous amount of help, too. And it helped us. It helped Luke and I, you know, through the process, understand where this is going, what it's doing, too. So kudos to you guys as well.
All right. Councilmembers, any questions about the proposal?
I have a question that I don't know if you'll have the answer to yet. I know you talked about creating a job description. And just looking at some of the numbers that were in the packet related to, for example, it says, Timneth has 14 businesses and organizations in the downtown area, including churches and nonprofits. And the other communities that that you had looked at all had, you know, 60 to 75. So how, what, what role, or how do you believe that a full time person is going to occupy their time for 40 hours a week with such a small geographical area to work with?
Yeah. So I'll let Debbie chime in if she has anything. I probably should have said this in the presentation. I think initially, we're anticipating this person will be a part time contract employee. The hope would be over the years, as this grows, that this would become more full time. But yeah, initially, we're anticipating this will be closer to, you know, 15 to 20 hours a week, especially because some of it will really be dependent on, you know, the amount of funding we receive. But I think we're hoping that, you know, or that we're anticipating within that first year, maybe that even that second year, there's going to be a lot of partnership building. So connecting with those town businesses that do exist, getting them on board with us, also developing events. Obviously, we have so many great events already happening in the town. And so identifying, how can we host events that have a fundraising element that still bring people out? And then also working with and managing the board. We also anticipate in that first year that there will be a bit more of a administrative lift, specifically as it relates to the 501(c)(3). And so really, that's kind of how we're anticipating that 20 hours a week being filled within that first one to two years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then writing grants. Yeah, that's also quite time consuming. And that is a big thing when we do write the job description. That's going to be one of the skill sets we're really looking at, in addition to event management and program management also, grant writing.
I was the executive director for a small nonprofit for four years. I was the only paid employee. So I very much understand that that aspect.
Yes.
So I find the proposal, the hybrid aspect of it, critical. This is only going to be successful if the metrics that you outlined come back in a year after your first full year, if you're successful in getting grants, successful at hosting events that raise funds, et cetera. So I think the metrics are a critical piece of this proposal. Yeah, and I, I'm too, I'm concerned about, you know, how much can be done, given the limited number of businesses in the, in the current footprint of business opportunities. Hopefully, that will grow over time. And certainly, if the rec center goes in, there's there's space there for additional businesses potentially. So, yeah, I'm in support of the proposal. But I also think that we have to keep in mind, you know, you'll be about the, the, the process will be to evaluate you guys every year. And so, yeah.
I don't know if this is best for Aaron, or Scott, or who. In terms of the staff support that'll be needed to, to back this up, do we believe that that's a bandwidth that we currently have? Or is that going to be something that we'll also have to look at, you know, staff expansion?
We discussed it in our department, and we believe that the initial support, we have the bandwidth for in our department.
And then, maybe Carolyn, you can chime in on this. The requested amount for the startup costs and whatever, I imagine you'll be involved with, you know, some of the 501(c)(3) formation and whatnot. Are we allocating appropriate money to be able to get through all that?
Yeah, the town got a quote, actually. So I won't actually be the one that will be forming this, where we got a referral for another law firm. Lisa, do you want to, I forget the name of the law firm. Oh, well, Lisa's behind you. So, yes. So we got a referral to a law firm that specializes in forming 501(c)(3)'s. And they gave us a quote of, I believe, $4,000. And so that $11,000 includes their quote for the organizing and the startup costs.
And then, as I look at the actual resolution here, it will authorize this year the expenditure of the $11,300. And then it directs Lisa to include a line item in the draft budget of $50,000. But that budget process is something that still, any line item would be subject to revision. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we cannot legally, you know, commit that money for next year without going through the public hearing and the required processes. So that's why it was formed in terms of expressing your intent to hopefully appropriate the money by asking your finance director to include it as a proposed line item.
Yeah, I have a question. So, and will there be a financial report that is presented and some kind of outside certification of how the money has, has been spent, et cetera, that comes back to council?
To clarify, do you mean like an audit, or just?
Yeah, financial report with some, some level of outside certification. So, yeah.
Yes, we do anticipate that we'll have to consult with ACPA at some point in the process in order to provide that type of report and to confirm, you know, where our funding is going.
Yeah. And the reason I ask that is
Quarterly. So, yeah.
Yeah. And the reason I ask that is, we're talking about, you know, potentially $50,000 worth of taxpayer funds, and there needs to be transparent accounting of how those funds are spent, both to the council, but also to the citizens of the town, so that we can keep everybody happy.
Yes.
Or most everybody, you're not going to keep everybody.
Yes, I believe I mentioned it in the presentation, but our plan would be that quarterly, we would be putting out reports of our expenditures and our earnings. Again, we do know that we'll have to work with the CPA during this process. And then, at least, you know, once a year, we'll be coming to council, usually around the time we're making that budget request for the year. Because like you said, we can't technically ask for that now. But that we would, again, walk you all through what, you know, that
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's really critical component. So, thank you.
I'm ready to like, make recommendations. I don't have any questions. So. Any other questions? All right. At this point, is there a motion?
I move to, sorry, I'm looking for the language here. Move to approve Resolution Number 44, Series 2025, a resolution approving the organization and funding of the Timneth Main Street program.
Okay, is there a second? Second, all right, we'll discuss, beginning with Councilmember Lake, your motion.
I think the fact that the survey just showed us that people want us to be investing in Old Town, which we had
in Old Town, which we, we had heard before, but now we have the numbers, I think helps to support this. I do agree with obviously seeing financials and, and everything that comes from that. The first year for any nonprofit is kind of a guessing game. And so hopefully by the end of, let's say, 2026, you'll have a, a little bit more of an idea of situations related to receiving grants, how much staff time is needed, all of those kinds of things. Most small nonprofits, I know the one I worked for, we never did an, an audit. We had a CPA do our taxes, but we never, we weren't required to do an audit. So you can typically sometimes save a little bit of money there. But that could also be something that the council could decide to require of, of someone that we give money to as well. So, but I think this is great timing as far as what the community has wanted. And I'm glad we have the staff time to be able to dedicate to this. And I look forward to hearing updates as it progresses.
Councilmember Holt?
Yeah. I will, I will be in support of this too. Obviously concerns as we all have along the entire way. I think the, the need for this, obviously 81% of our, of our voters, of 622 say that they feel as if an investment into Old Town is, is correct. I think the big picture for all of this is we're choosing to create a Main Street program to impact a small part of a large town. And that the impact of that small part is so that the entire town can have access to that small part of town. I think the, the reason why I say that's important is, is Old Town is, is a beautiful area in part of Timneth that I want all, all of Timneth residents to benefit from. And I want that to be a vibrant area for all of Timneth. And I think that is, that's a crucial part. But I think, you know, we've said it before, and I think, you know, all the council members have, have hit on it, but it takes a lot of work. And I think you guys know that very well. I think that the, the support that we saw with number of applicants as far as the board is concerned shows that the town and the residents are, are willing and able to do that. Now it's, let's see how it goes, right? Let's see what the work is. But it's, it's a working board. It, it, the metrics, I'm glad that it is done this way because it's, you know, for the residents and for the improvement of the town. It can't just be an endless budget going towards it. So for all those reasons, I think it's, it's a great idea. Like I said, I'm in support of it. I just hope that those several things come to fruition. So we, it's an easy, easy conversation in years moving forward.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah. So I'm in support of this. I think the, the metrics and the financial transparency are critical to Councilman Holt. Yep. The fact that we have a large community's percentage support for investing in Old Town is important. I also think that over time, this could evolve. And so the business model that, that we're starting out with right now with significant 50% contribution from the town could change over time, depending on what happens with the Main Street organization. You guys may come back at some point and say, gee, we'd really like to have a business improvement district. Or if we were really successful, maybe DDA. But we're not there yet. So this is a, you know, it's a, it's an experiment is basically what it is. And we will be looking closely every year and, and hope that the group is successful in, in growing Old Town to the benefit of all of the citizens of Timneth. So I, I'll be supporting it.
You're brought in.
So I, I wrote this out because I wanted to make sure I got it right. So, so again, I want to really thank the Old Town Steering Committee for their time, their dedication and their persistence. We've, we've been at this a long time and made meaningful progress. This request really reflects a lot of hard work, thoughtful research and a clear commitment to revitalizing Old Town Timneth. Each time Jeremy and I ask something and we ask for more data or a different approach, everybody stepped up and delivered. So amazing work. Tonight, I'm going to express my support for funding the startup costs of the, the Colorado Main Street program. With that said, I'd like to propose two things, two conditions to help guide the process. So as we are working through this, one of the things that we struggled with was we don't have a formal Main Street board in place. So what I was thinking is, and we don't, we, we talked about this as a committee, is we don't have a credit card. We don't have a bank account. So what I was thinking is I would recommend all invoices and expenses related to the startup, startup phase be processed through the town finance department. So that way we can continue to ensure good oversight like we've talked about. And it keeps the program moving. So I, I think if we try to set up other parts of this, it might delay the process. So I was hoping, I, I didn't see that in there, but I, or we assumed that that might happen. But I, I was hoping to propose that. Yeah. Second, right now, we're in the process of interviewing the Main Street board. So we have our interviews tomorrow and Thursday. And I think we've got one interview at a later time. And what I also want to propose is, I know we, we don't necessarily allocate those funds tonight or we direct, but I would also like those board members to take a hard look at this budget as well. In a sense, they are going to be the people that are going to be involved in that budget and have to live and, live and die by that budget. So as, as that time comes essentially, sorry, as the budget comes this following year, I would like those board members to also come back to council with a secondary look at that budget as well, and an opportunity to review that budget as the board members. So I know we will have our public comment and we'll have those times during that board, but I would like those board members to be reviewed. We've got a lot of great applicants, really smart. Just, I'm really impressed by some of the people that are applying for the board. So I was thinking maybe we could have a secondary look at the budget and have them dive in with the Old Town Steering Committee and see maybe if there's anything missing or just a secondary look. So those were my kind of two conditions is that the board actually come back with the Old Town Steering Committee and be willing to talk about it at budget time with us again.
Right. I'm really excited that, that we're here today. One of the first things that the town staff helped me put in place right after this council took office, well, a little over a year ago, was the Old Town brainstorming session. And that's kind of where, where all this started. And that was very well attended. We got, we got some great ideas. What flowed from that was the proposal to commit this Old Town Steering Committee. I really, really appreciate the, the work that has gone into that. I know it's not easy to get so many people to see things in the same way. I know a lot of things have, have been considered. But the proposal and the dollar amounts that, that are coming to us now, I, I think are very reasonable. You know, especially in, in light of or supported by, again, we mentioned that the 81%. I'm kind of assuming that once the Main Street Committee Board is in place, that that likely means the Steering Committee will, will kind of fade into the background now that we have an official entity to, to take that. So I, that, that's just kind of, kind of my assumption there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I, you know, share some of the, the concerns of we're, this is government, we need to be transparent, we need to be accountable. I am supportive of the dollar amounts being proposed. I am wondering if we don't put something into place in terms of the $50,000 next year, you know, instead of just being allocated on the front end, maybe it's allocated in phases following, you know, quarterly reports showing that the other targets are being met. Or, you know, maybe it's a dollar for dollar match, something like that. I, I guess I would maybe ask the new board, once it's up and running, to maybe propose how to incorporate some of that, that accountability into it. And then, you know, the last thing that was just in my mind is there is spending money to target Old Town development, economic development. And then there's the other question of town-wide economic development. And I think that's a separate conversation, one that, that we'll continue to have. But I just wanted to, to throw that out there that, you know, just because we are committing some money to Old Town, doesn't mean that we shouldn't also have the conversation about overall town economic development. Any other?
Yeah, I have just one other comment. You mentioned grants. I would also encourage once you start writing grants to also look into corporate grants. There are a number of corporations that do, for small towns, provide grants for community development and economic development. And so don't just depend on the federal and state government for your, for your grants.
All right. And I, I will add, I appreciate it and supportive of Mayor Protem's recommendations there in terms of the, the money flowing through the town for, for this year and some of the other accountability measures. Thank you. All right, very well. All those in favor of approving Resolution 44, Series 2025, a resolution approving the organization and funding? Go ahead.
So it depends on if you want that to just be direction. In terms of the first question, I think it's already included. Section two says, "Council hereby approves purchasing authorization to provide funding in the amount of $11,300 in 2025 for startup costs associated with Timneth Main Street." So I read that as already saying that the amounts would be processed through the town finance department as a spending authorization. It's not being provided to Timneth. So to Timneth Main Street, which isn't yet formed. So it would only be the second item if you wanted to incorporate that in. You could certainly, if you wanted, have an amendment to your existing motion that would, at the end of the paragraph where it says, you're directing the finance director to include in the draft budget, an amount of $50,000. You could say comma, "subject to a report from the Timneth Main Street directors as to what they believe the appropriate amount should be," or something to that effect.
I'm fine doing it anyways. Since this will be discussed in the budget process, my feeling is we've, we've given sufficient direction.
Okay. Sounds like we're comfortable with that then. All those in favor of the resolution approving the organization and funding of the Timneth Main Street program signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. There's five zero. Thank you, everyone. All right. Item 6C, first reading and setting a public hearing on June 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM regarding ordinance number eight, Series 2025, and ordinance adopting the amended purchasing policy. And Scagliardi, can you give us the Cliff Notes version of what we'll be discussing that day?
Yeah. So since I'm just introducing this topic, I'll do the presentation next time. The purchasing policy was last adopted in 2020. And since then, the town has changed quite a bit. And so this policy just increases and changes thresholds to be more in line with other municipalities of similar sizes and also streamline some of our processes while still maintaining some of the controls and transparency. So look forward to having that discussion in two weeks.
All right. And for anyone that's interested, the proposed policy is, is all in here. And so certainly would appreciate people appearing, submitting public comments in person or via email if there are any concerns. Council and questions? And is there a motion to approve on first reading and set a public hearing for June 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for ordinance eight, Series 2025? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. We will be back for public hearing, June 24th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Carrie, do you have a sleep? Item 6D, Resolution 45, Series 2025, a resolution approving the contract with Aspen Grading and Excavating for the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Service Line Project. Director Spence?
It's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening for your consideration. Approximately 15 years ago or so, the town initiated a project to convert all septic systems in the Old Town area to public sewer service. As of today, there's only three properties that have not been converted from a septic system to public sewer service. All three of those are properties along the north side of Fourth Avenue between Kern and Timneth Parkway. So here's a graphic showing you where the three properties are. Obviously, it's a slightly older aerial because Fourth Avenue has been improved since this photograph was taken. Starting from the far left or the west side, that is the right. The property in the middle where that green line is, that's the Alberico property. And the furthest one to the east or the right side of the screen is the Martin property. So in general, we're going to run sanitary sewer service lines along those green lines in that aerial photo. As Mr. Alberico mentioned, his is a little more complicated than the other two. We will open cut a good portion of that. But when we get back to their property, we're actually going to bore that sewer line in to avoid a lot of the improvements they have on their property and, and some of the trees. So we went, we issued this project through a request for proposal process as opposed to a hard bid. And the reason we took that approach is we wanted the contractors to look at it and give us proposals on how they would approach the project because it's not exactly straightforward. I would say two of the three properties are fairly straightforward, but I wanted some creative solutions that were maybe less disruptive. And I think of the two proposals we received, both of them were very similar. They both proposed to do some boring as opposed to 100% open cutting the project. The lowest cost was from Aspen Grading and Excavating at $62,520. We're also requesting a 20% contingency bringing the total request to $75,024. I just want to point out the 20% contingency is a little higher than normal, but based on our experience out in that area, there's, there's a layer of hard pan in some locations that's very difficult to dig through. So if we happen to run into some of that, we may have to compensate the contractor a little bit extra for the extra effort. And then there, anytime you dig in the ground, there's always unknowns. So just a little insurance blanket there. The engineer's estimate for the project was $78,922, which is very close to the low cost price. So with that, I recommend the adoption of the resolution. Ask for any questions.
Council questions?
So the recharge pond out there, as I recall, had, and I know it's a lot deeper than the lines that you're proposing to put in, but it's close by. And that, my understanding is the recharge pond had some real issues because of, I don't know what the soil type is, but it's like really hard rock and it was a. And it was a lot more involved digging that recharge pond than what was initially anticipated. And so I'm wondering if 20% contingency, you feel that that's enough?
Well, I certainly hope so, and I would be hesitant to ask for more because I think 20% is generally, you know, sort of at the upper end of what we asked for. The budget would allow for a larger contingency, and we're well within budget. But I think we're okay. Well, we're gonna give it our best shot. And honestly, if we need a little extra funding, then, you know, we have the room to do that.
Okay, great, thanks.
From a historical perspective, over the last 15 years, do you know what we've spent on this project all in total?
We actually put those figures together for the Old Town Committee recently. I don't have those in front of me, but we'd be glad to share those with counsel. It's, I think with all of the projects over the last, what, 15, 20 years, it's about $14 million. And that's not just the sewer, that's other projects. But downtown in the Old Town area, it's around $14 million.
Okay, so around $14 million in Old Town over the last 15 years?
Yes.
So on average, a million bucks a year? Okay. All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 45, Series 2025, a resolution approving the contract with Aspen Grading and Excavating for the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Service Line project?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'm guessing that those last three remaining homes are probably looking forward to it. I grew up in a home with septic tank initially. And when our town decided to add sewage, it was a happy time for my parents. And septic toilet paper is not the best thing. So I'm sure everyone will be glad that this project will finally be done.
That's what I've heard.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, we did talk about it at the Old Town Standing Committee. And I think the 13.6 million was the number. So yeah, thank you for coming out and speaking tonight about it and speaking your support. So that means a lot. I'm going to be in voting in support. Glad to get this done and glad to kind of wrap up a 15-year project under our counsel term.
I will also support this. Obviously, $75,000 compared to the 13-plus million that's already been spent on this and other projects. It definitely makes sense to get this across the finish line. Looks like the contractor makes sense coming in below the engineer's estimate. And so I will support. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution 43, Series 2025, resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to the independent contractor agreement? That's not it. Rewind. All those in favor of Resolution 45, Series 2025, resolution approving the contract with Aspen Grading and Excavating for the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Service Line project signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. All right, we have just one agenda item left, which is a request for an executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session pursuant to Section 24, 6, 402, 4B CRS for conferences with an attorney for the town for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to the lawsuit between the town and Timnith Lands LLC?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? We will take a brief five-minute pause. Since this is executive session, we'll have to ask everyone not to party to the discussion to leave. But appreciate everyone coming tonight. We'll reconvene here in five minutes.
All right, we are back on the record having concluded our executive session. That was our last agenda item for the evening, so unless there is an objection.